Good morning. And you've got the prayer.
Okay.
This time I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if you'd please stand, Commissioner Nicholson will lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Don't leave me in prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for another beautiful day that you blessed us with, Lord. Lord, just thank you for all those that attended today and those who's watching. Lord, just pray that we just do everything that's pleasing you. We ask you to lead and direct us, and, Lord, as we remember those that's going on in the East, Lord, and just keep them in the prayers and the ward that's going on, Lord, we're just asking you to be an all-in that, Lord. And we just ask forgiveness for it, and in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make a comment, please.
All right.
To everyone that's here today, I certainly am very familiar with this situation. I was principal of Sandy Ridge Elementary School from January of 99 to July of 2002. And I made many trips down to Rockingham County from Sandy Ridge Elementary School when we had tri-county meetings of elementary principals, been down that road, been by the road, been on that road, probably more times than anybody here except for the Hickman family and the people that live there. And I felt like they came in and gave a very good presentation of why they want that road to remain open. However, I have not. And I always made a commitment when I took this job six years ago that I wanted to have all the information in front of me so I could have due diligence as I made decisions. Didn't get, I didn't get that information from the other group. So I, at this time, would like to make a motion on the agenda to table, to table under Action Agenda, table the abandonment resolution request for Victory Hill Church Road until I feel like the entire board gets all the information they need to make a, make a very good decision. So I would, my motion is to approve the agenda with the amendment of tabling Item B under Action, which is abandonment resolution. And that is it.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on that motion on the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to see that petition that was referenced, and I've asked for it and haven't received it, so I'm inclined to agree with.
All right, so we'll be striking Item B off of Action, which is the abandonment resolution, and we'll table that for a later date. So I have a motion to approve the agenda with that deletion. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the agenda. The next item is public comments, and the first person signed up to speak is Wayne Amos. If you would come, you have four minutes and just state your name and address, please.
I am here to speak.
Put your microphone so those online can hear you as well.
But I was here to speak on the Victory Hill route, and since it's tabled, this is not, won't be necessary at this time, I don't think, right?
That's correct.
So if I find out when it is, I'll be back.
All right. Well, thank you for your time today. Sorry about this.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person signed up to speak is Bobby Hickman.
Thank y'all for listening, and I don't think that road should be closed. No way in Ohio. That road is old, 200 years old. But as we can see, I don't know how old it is. And my grandpa, grandma, distant cousin, everybody, I've been down that road. I've been on it five times last week. I done been on it this week, going out into 770, and a sharp cut, come up and go down. So ain't no way I'd, I'd be hurt on all of us if it's closed, because it's a circle road, and people walk it, people ride bicycles, motorcycles, and everything around the road. And one guy, he walks it every day, and he picks up cans and all. And one other guy is a veteran, and he is shell shocked. He goes around that road at least three times a day. And sometimes he's up at 12:00 at night, 3:00, he can't sleep. So that's what he do is, he don't bother nobody, he just goes around the road and trying to rest. So he deserves something like that anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Anna Welsky.
If it's being tabled, I will push mine out till when it's discussed, and you guys will have all the documentation that you need.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right. Now I will move to the comments from the commissioners and the manager, and I'll start down here with Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to welcome everybody out to our meeting today. We appreciate you attending and participating in our local government, and always appreciate your advice on any issues that we're working on. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right. Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to see everybody here. Beautiful day to be here at 2:00, and I appreciate you spending your time here instead of being outside and keeping what's going on. As I said in the prayer, let's please keep the neighbors overseas in our prayers and hope that this matter resolves quickly and no more lives are taken. And besides it, that's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Men, that's not.
That was Commissioner Ronnie, but that wasn't big enough.
This is my sixth year, but it's been nice knowing you. Thank you, Madam Chair. We appreciate that introduction.
Yeah, yes.
No, I just want to say to everybody, thank you for being here today. I say it every time. I appreciate the people that comes out to our meetings and participates in our governmental process. And to everyone watching us on live stream, I appreciate y'all taking your time out of your day. And by the next meeting, I promise you, our chairman will know my last name.
You could just turn your name facing me a little bit more, that would help.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Okay, Madam Chair, Bernie Castle.
Again, reiterate what some of the commissioners said. It's great to see everybody. It's a beautiful day the Lord has blessed us with. And as Commissioner Nicholson said, the people over in the Ukrainian foreign countries, we say a prayer, we need to remember these folks. You know, we've been blessed here in this country, and I always pray and think about our military people. I hope things get better, I really do, but great to see everyone.
And I'll just echo what my fellow commissioners have said. It's great to see everybody here and great to see everybody that what we know is online that couldn't be here, and everybody that came out on a beautiful day just to spend a little time with the governmental process. So thanks for being here. Shannon Shaver.
You got my name, bud?
I got your name.
Welcome to everybody here. As always, if there's anything that Amber and I can do to help you out in the community or you need anything from us or the commissioners, feel free to reach out. I do want to mention something I forgot to mention at the last meeting, and I thought about it, just to take a minute to ask that everyone to be in prayer for the family of Ann Vance. I know a lot of you knew Ann really well. Ann was a longtime employee at DSS, and she passed away on February the 7th, and she's left quite a void at DSS. They're really missing her there. And so just to keep her in your prayers and her family in your prayers, she was a larger-than-life personality if you've ever met Ann. So just, just keep the Vance family in your prayers, if you will.
And could you also remind people about the survey, the Internet survey?
Oh, yeah. So we sent out, I think everybody got too many calls, but we asked the school system to send out a call for us and on social media, and we also sent some calls out asking you to take a broadband survey. If you've not gotten the call yet or gotten that info, reach out to our office, and we can get you the link to that. It's really important to complete the survey. We're looking at expanding the broadband in the county, and that survey will help us to identify the unserved and underserved areas. The current map that's been submitted to the state is just completely incorrect. It's got a lot of areas that show covered that are not covered. And if you take that survey from home, it'll test your speeds, show you what your current coverage is, if you have any, and that submits the correct data to the state. So just take time to take that. So it takes about five minutes. If you need help getting that survey, just let us know. Good idea. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Before we move on, I'll read our Conflicts of Interest statement. Does any board member have a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda for today or one that could be perceived as a conflict of interest? All right, there are none. We'll move on to Consent. The Minutes and the Budget Amendments. Is there any questions about the Consent Agenda?
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our Discussion Agenda, and the first item is our Tax Office Agenda. Richard Bream.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing?
Good, how are you?
I'd like to, before I start, this may be the last minute, maybe one more when Julia's here, but Julia, you know, is getting ready to retire, and I'd like to thank Julia for all the years she's given to the county, and I'd like to thank Julia for always helping me and always being there. I've been doing this job for almost four years now, and she's always been there to help me, and look forward to working with Lisa, and glad to see you back.
All right. As always, our first item is our monthly tax collections report. We've collected almost 24.2 million, a little over 98%. We're on track to meet budget. Last year, at this time, we were at 98%, so we're all on track to meet budget, so that's looking good. Next item is we have real and personal releases less than 100. We have four camps that total $179.75. Then we have real and personal refunds more than 100. We have six camps that total $986.12. And then we have one late application for forestry present use value. And then the next item is going to be our advertisements of our 2021 tax liens for real property. And then the final item I have is just an update on our county-owned surplus property. I'd like to give commissioners an update on that. We have 15 surplus properties, county-owned surplus properties, that we obtained when nobody placed a bid on at our tax foreclosure sale. And of those 15 properties, I'm proud to report that collective effort between the Board, Glenda Pruitt, our purchasing agent, and the Tax Office, we have sold 11 of those 15 properties. The remaining four properties, one, there is a current bid on right now. There's one that is a small piece of property that's only good to the jointed property owners that maybe one of those folks will buy it. Then we have one that we don't have a bid on. And then the final one that I have here is a piece of property that is 1600ths of an acre that is adjacent to a town-owned park in One at Cove across from London Elementary. Talked to the School of Government and talked to Nick Orby, Assistant County Attorney, and they said that the Board can have a deed draft and gift that to the town if the town deems to hold the property indefinitely for public use. I've talked to Shannon Shaver, County Manager, she's in agreeance with this. Talked to Kim Greenwood, Town Manager of One at Cove, he's in agreeance with this. And the School of Government says the $5,351.98 taxes that's owed on it, we can write that off as insolvent in the annual settlement. Nick done a little research on it, said we can do this. He said the only thing we need to do when he prepares the deed or Ty prepares the deed would put a reversionary clause in. If the town, if the town for whatever reason decided to get rid of that piece of property, it would revert back to the county. So just asking the Board to, if they'll approve this, then at the next meeting, put it to action and approve that, then we'll have the county attorney draft the deed.
All right.
That's all I have.
All right. I'll start down here with Commissioner Morris. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, Madam Chair.
All right.
I'm good to go with doing the land thing, but.
Okay. Any other board members have questions?
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. I need this for, for, it can, it can, next time. Yeah. Or they can do it to that, whatever, whatever the Board chooses.
What I mean is, like, your other stuff normally gets to consent, you have to buy it, but what's that on consent and what's that on action?
Got you. So yes, I'm requesting the surplus go to action for next board meeting, and the real and personal refunds more than 100, and the present use value late application, and the advertisement of the 2021 tax liens go on the Consent Agenda for the March 14th meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. All right. Our next item, Item B on Discussion, Revisions to the Policy for Fire Commission and Use of Service District Funds, which is Fire Marshal Scott Aaron, who stepped around the corner. There he is. He's back. You're up.
Thank you. And like Richard said, Julia, thank you for all of your hard work with what you've done for the Fire Marshal's Office and the volunteer fire departments of this county. Excuse me. What we're bringing to you today is the change of the nine-page document is what it's called. It's the agreement between the county commissioners and the fire commissioners on how they distribute the service district tax funds. There was some verbiage in there that didn't coincide with how things go now a little bit, and I don't know, on mine, I think y'all have a copy of it.
Yeah.
Do you want me to go through each line and discuss it, or?
I read it. I don't need to, need you to.
Yeah, I mean, you could just highlight the changes, I think would be good.
In line three, the, if they do emergency request, if the fire, if a fire department has an emergency request and they came to the fire commissioners requesting funding for that, the way the document read, it said that it had to go back to the association for them to vote on it before it could come to you guys for a vote. They wanted to change that, and the fire departments all voted and agreed to any of these changes, so it went before the association, and they've all, the chief reviewed it, and they've all agreed with it. The other item was, let me find it here, that in the past, if a fire department came to the fire commissioners, they had to give them an answer right then. The fire commissioners felt that that kind of tied their hands with, you know, you only have so much money, and if you have more requests than you have money, it becomes first come, first served. So they've requested that it be changed to give them time to table it, review it, do their homework, and then come back and give a vote on whether they wanted to fund a request. And then the Item 11 is there's no chief's counsel in Stokes County. It's only the fire, the Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. So it just changed that verbiage to take out chief's counsel.
Okay. Do any board members have any questions about any of these changes?
I don't. I think it pretty much might come soon to make it a little bit easier on really both ends, both parts, and get things moving faster. I see no problem with it at all.
You're the resident expert.
I totally agree with you. I think it should have been like that, but, you know, we, the fire commissioners should have that authority to do that with that money, because two or three of those people are appointed by this board, so, you know, you shouldn't have to go through all this red tape, just try to get something done.
Got you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Action for next meeting.
Yeah, we'll have that on action at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Okay. The next item is the tethering of animals, and I think Candace Loy of the Animal Advisory, Animal Control Advisory Board wanted to present a video to us.
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you today. I do have a little bit over four-minute video I'd like for everyone to watch before we proceed.
Okay.
This is the property that the seizure took place at last August.
We're looking here in South Carolina, North Carolina, with a pretty horrific scene of animal suffering from extreme intractable cruelty. We're responding to a request for assistance from a county therapist by a property that is a ongoing problem in the community. It's a combination of breeding and hoarding to try and create some type of puberty. We've got a lot of dogs on this property. They are spread out over a wide area. Dogs outside are chained, most of them in horrible, battered condition, but there's four of them here. Been chained outside with no shelter, exposed to the elements, extreme heat, there's flash board warnings for the fever. These dogs are not very well down there, have no shelter at all.
All of the dogs on this property are chained, like they're more on stakes in the ground. There is very little human interaction. It's not acceptable.
Everybody here is under weight. If they have water at all, it's just the green old bucket that catches rain when it rains. It is the worst matting I've ever seen on a large dog, covering their whole body. It is really pathetic. Just crawling with weight. And a lot of them hardly have any fur left on them at all. They've just got such mange exposure, and it's just, it's really cruel. Doing something like this, that is this big and on this scale, it takes a lot of people, it takes a lot of skill, a lot of resources. So we can do, we could not be here without our partners and friends at the Bissell Tuck Foundation. Their critical financial support has made this operation possible, and we are very grateful.
Our mission is to really fortun human animal bonds, and collaborating with organizations like Animal Rescue Corps allows us to do that. We are so very grateful to collaborate and really make an impact here in North Carolina.
Situations like this are unusual in rural communities. These communities have no resources to address this type of stuff. They barely have enough resources for the people in their community, and the animals kind of get quick to the signs. So that's where our resources are so valued to the departments, to the police department, the sheriff's department, and animal control in these rural areas, because they simply don't have the resources to address these. So we're not resourceful. We're that free resource. And that's what makes our duty, and supporting that, that is how we do it.
The animals today, once they get the vaccine, are emergency sheltered and, it's going to be a life-threatening, they're going to be outside, getting all the medical care that they need, nutrition, hydration. They'll learn about people, and that proper people will go feed them every day. And they go, they're like, yeah, wait till you get the vaccine.
Operations like this may not be happening in your backyard, but that doesn't mean you can't be a part of it. You can donate, you can share our stories, you can educate people about how buying dogs from online is supporting places just like this. So, if we're down.
So that's pretty much why I'm here today, to talk to you about moving forward with some changes in tethering in this county. That's an extreme situation, but I've actually been on hoarding cases in this county myself and removed 20 and 30 dogs off of chains. This overwhelms our Stokes County Animal Shelter and Animal Welfare Departments. Majority of the cases that they get are from chained dogs and chained animals. And I'm not going to read to you the information that I've already sent to you, but I do want to add to it that the CDC says tethered dogs are three times more likely to bite, and if the victim is less than 12 years old, they are five times more likely to bite. And for Forsyth County, 8% of all cruelty and neglect calls are chained dogs. We don't have the statistics here, because when they bite, they're just listed as a bite. We don't know whether they're stray biting or on chains. The USDA also, continuous confinement by a tether is inhumane. And we're talking about tethering 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And we're not talking, we're talking about adding in an assisted tethering. You're out there with it. Manned tethering, that's what we're asking for. Does anybody have any questions or for any of the information that I sent you? I know our Board has looked at, we've wanted a tethering ban for a long time. We've not been able to get there. So the first, the ordinances were put in place last April is the first step towards getting there. You normally need to give owners time to adjust to how they're tethering, and then you ask for the tethering ban.
All right. Go ahead.
Thanks, Candace. Appreciate it. I have two, three, or four questions here. First one, should we be gathering that data that Forsyth has, or?
That was just, that was just something, when talking with them, in conversation with them, talking to other counties, because we don't have any specifics on bite, you know, they're not really segregated out, whether they're on a chain or whether they're stray and biting.
Like 80?
We get reports that's just bite reports.
Okay. I mean, my question is, should we be recording more than what we are, though, so we'll have that information?
Absolutely.
Okay. And it's like 80% of the cruelty cases you said in Forsyth are?
They were chained animals.
Or chained animals?
Chained animals.
Or tether-type animals?
The part that we would need to add in to the current ordinance that we have is that any activity where a tethered dog is in visual sight of its owner or keep, or the owner keeps it located, the owner is outside located with the animal. So if you're out working out in the yard, yeah, you can tie your dog out while you're out there with it. This is mainly addressed to 24, 365 tethering. And there are, whether we can see it, see them or not, they're there. You know, you may always be able to see them from the road.
Oh, yeah.
But they're, they're in this county, and there's probably even situations that are as bad as that, that we just don't know about.
So are you proposing to give us some language to take this to the next step?
Yes.
The council, the Animal Advisory Council do that?
And it's pretty much from the one that we already have, now that I included that in your packet, just going in there and adding just what, just what I mentioned there.
Okay. Well, I think, I think what you mentioned about being attended, tended tethering?
The tracks I was with, yeah.
I think that would need to be expanded on a little bit, like if, you know, if I tie my dog outside for 10 minutes and I'm in the house 50 feet away, is that unattended or attended?
Well, it's, one says, an activity where a tethered dog is in visual range of its owner or keeper, and the owner or keeper is located outside with a dog.
Like if we, whatever we end up with, it just needs to be real specific and enforceable, and it's got to take into account the person as well as the animal, to make sure, I guess, that we don't have unintended consequences from, of, like if you went to zero tethering, period.
Well, you and I talked about partial, doing a partial, you can't, there's so many partials that they're just not enforceable. There's, there's no need in having it if we can't enforce it.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're And, you know, we're in the process of looking at building a new shelter, you know, we don't want to overwhelm a new shelter, just continuous seizure cases. And that's, this last year, this shelter's been full of seizure cases. And most of those have been chained animals.
Do you have a preferred set of language that you would have based on, say, what other counties are doing, that you could give us?
We have a combination of some things that we want, that we can come up with.
Okay.
And I guess today was just to find out if you're interested in moving on to the next step to do this, to become a more humane county. And just because we're rural doesn't mean that we have to be an inhumane county to animals.
I would be interested in taking a look at the next step, definitely. Also, the, one of the things we had in the past that, and this is a little bit separate from this specific issue, but we had animal cruelty investigators assigned that were working with, I guess they worked mainly with the sheriff's department, but they were independent, though, and they were, they had badges and everything. So do you, do we need to do something like that?
Absolutely.
Restate something like that, or?
Absolutely. Every county, I know that for a long time, we had one, and she was a volunteer. She, she wasn't paid. And then we did have one that contracted out of the sheriff's department, but she's no longer doing that, absolutely, because this is a prime example. This is something that should have been stopped three years ago.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And it probably wouldn't have been as bad as it was.
Yeah, one thing with that specific case that was in the video, that along with the dog and issues and the other animals, there's also the mental health issue of the people that were doing it, or the person that was doing it.
Well, one thing is, this becomes a health issue, because I do spay neuter every day.